The August 25th, 2020 regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. I'm going, is anybody wanting to do the voluntary? Norris, can you unmute yourself, please?
Yes, I'm here.
Can you lead us in the invocation today, please? And I'm going to ask City Manager Eric Lee to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Norris?
Yes, everyone can bow their heads. Dear heavenly Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessings. We pray that we have a very special meeting, that we get things accomplished, and that we all stay strong during COVID-19. Thank you, and let's have a good meeting.
Awesome. Amen.
Hey. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, diversity, and justice for all.
Thank you to both of you. I would like to call on Jan Vogel, Executive Director of the South Bay Workforce Investment Board for a presentation.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome back. It's good to see you. It's been a while.
I appreciate it, Mayor, and council members and other distinguished officials of the city of Hawthorne. I was asked by Councilwoman Olivia to do an oral presentation today. Usually, it's a written presentation that we provide quarterly, but we'll do an oral presentation this time. This report summarizes the July 16th, 2020, South Bay Workforce Investment Board meeting activities and program accomplishments during the fourth quarter of 2019-20. The South Bay Workforce Investment Board 25th Annual Award Ceremony will be held on October 28 at 3:00. The award ceremony celebrates outstanding accomplishments of the workforce development community during the past year and honors employers, training providers, graduates. You usually come to that ceremony, and we do it in person, and we have a lot of fun. At dinner this time, it's going to be a virtual award ceremony. So we're hoping everybody tunes into that, and we'll be getting you more information on that. COVID-19 impact on services. The South Bay WIB operates four one-stop business and career centers located in Inglewood, Torrance, Gardena, and Carson, and two teen centers located in Hawthorne and Inglewood. The centers continue to offer services virtually or in person by appointment. Only about 60, 75 laid-off workers are assisted, about 60 or 75 laid-off workers are assisted daily during the hours of 8 to 11, while applying for unemployment insurance benefits as well. Recruitments, workshops, orientations, information center, case management, career pathway counseling, that's all available. About 98 youth received virtual assistance through the Hawthorne Teen Center this past quarter. Our total for the fiscal year reflects 83,297 visits to our centers, of which 41,565 visited the Inglewood Teen Center, and that's where the Hawthorne businesses and residents receive their services. Last quarter, the South Bay WIB received a total of 17 warn notices. Warn notices are notices, I know the mayor gets a copy of those, the warn notices are notices when there's mass layoffs or plant closures. A total of 17 notices from Hawthorne-based employers were received last quarter indicating that 1,089 individuals were laid off due to the novel coronavirus. The South Bay WIB's Rapid Response Team reached out to those employers and offered to provide webinars and assist the laid-off employees. On June 17th, the WIB hosted its first Virtual Blueprint for Workplace Success Youth and Young Adult Job Fair. Again, we usually have a big, big job fair with over 700 youth in the spring to help those young people for the summer. This year, we did it virtually, and we had a lot of participants, several hundred participants, and we had local businesses involved, and we had the participants ready to provide a 30-second elevator speech to the businesses that were there. Businesses said it was terrific. The board has coordinated the delivery of thousands of bags to the South Bay school districts for the Grab and Go Meal Program. The school districts, particularly the school districts Setinella Valley Union High School District and Hawthorne Unified School District, or Hawthorne School District, under those programs, thousands of breakfasts and lunch meals were distributed daily to students and families affected by COVID-19. We were able to procure 110,000 bags in addition to the thousands donated by Target, Kaiser, Uline, Paperbacks Distributor, John's Market, Staples, Alpha Express, and Dine Brands, so that the lunch and breakfast were bagged, so that the kids could get fed that particular day, those days, and continue to get fed. Last quarter, students from Hawthorne High School Manufacturing and Engineering Academy began manufacturing surgical mask extenders, also known as ear savers. In an effort to support local manufacturing needs, frontline healthcare workers and first responders were provided these mask extenders. The South Bay WIB introduced a School of Business and Medical Partners, and also funded for the production of these mask extenders. Students are overseeing production remotely through distance learning, and the personal protective equipment is distributed to local hospitals, police departments, including Hawthorne Police Department. If your city needs more of those, or even needs face shields, let us know, and we'll do our best to get you some more. Due to the pandemic, traditional work experience for young people under the age of 18 has virtually been eliminated. Despite this, despite this, the need for young people to gain work experience still exists. So in response, we've developed several innovative youth initiatives, including Community Meal Prep Program. Local youth will be cooking and preparing meals to be distributed to seniors and other community members in need. Youth will receive training and paid wages as part of this experience. We're also providing a virtual office assistant program for local youth to work remotely and earn wages to provide basic office support to area businesses and nonprofits. Also, a web design assistance program. This program for studying, youth studying graphic design, will be able to utilize the skills they are learning through providing web, social media, marketing support to nonprofits and small businesses in the area. The Employment Development Department awarded us $800,000 to provide employment recovery services to those displaced workers because of COVID-19 pandemic. This is to provide 114 affected individuals. Last quarter, the South Bay WIB assisted Hawthorne-based SpaceX with cross-training employees to perform any current level 1 and 2 specialized inspections. Also, EDD provided an additional $995,500 to provide immediate job placement and training assistance to an additional 180 COVID-19-related laid-off workers. We have served as the lead and fiscal agent under the State of California Prison to Employment Program. This initiative covers seven workforce boards in LA County, and we are the lead in that. That program will provide employment and job placement services to over 700 formerly incarcerated individuals over a two-year period. The past quarter, the region successfully enrolled 190 individuals so far. The Department of Labor, US Department of Labor, awarded $12 million grant to West Los Angeles College and the South Bay WIB, a collaboration to prepare 5,000 pre-apprentices and apprentices in manufacturing with the focus on aerospace, bioscience over the next three years. This grant was one of the first of its kind. In fact, it's the first in the country that the Department of Labor certified as an aerospace apprenticeship program. Last quarter, the Department of Labor approved the apprenticeship standards for bio-manufacturing technician, production technician, biomedical equipment technician occupations also. To date, we've served 294 individuals, graduates, from our Aeroflex Pre-Aprenticeship Program, and 75 from our Bioflex Pre-Aprenticeship Program. In addition, the Employment Training Panel funding is available to Hawthorne companies in the manufacturing sector. Employers will receive reimbursement to provide training for their employees. Any Hawthorne business that's interested should contact us, and we will facilitate that for them. Two other things. Our Transitional Subsidized Employment Program has been refunded thanks to our state, local, state officials that helped us take it off the hit list of the may revise, the governor's may revise. It's backed fully funded, so we'll be able to take individuals that are on public assistance, single-headed household parents, and place them at nonprofits and businesses and public entities throughout our county area and put people to work. And for the public and nonprofit, as you may recall, they're on our payroll. Private businesses are on our payroll half the time. For about four or five months, for the remaining four or five months, we'll reimburse the business 60% of the wages. Also, regarding the Hawthorne Teen Center, we're hoping that September 8th, we can reopen the teen center on a limited basis, such as six people per hour. 3:00, 3:00 to 3:45, then a 15-minute break for cleaning, 4:00, 5:00, 6:00, et cetera. And the following week, we want to offer additional six people each hour and do it outside the teen center, in the back of the teen center at the park. So that's what we're shooting for, is to be able to do that, finally do something in person with those youths who really need to get out, and we'll help them with their homework and assignments and a myriad of other things as well. That's my quarterly report.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel, for that wonderful report. You continue to do amazing things for the community, even in spite of the coronavirus challenge. I wanted to ask you about the 17 warn notices. Does that mean that 17 businesses, we lost 17 businesses in the city? Is that what that was about?
Well, I don't have the exact information on the report, but 17 businesses were either were either closed or had massive layoffs. But remember, there's a lot of other businesses that have suffered for this COVID virus, many more than those. But if it was a lower number, then we wouldn't get the warn notice. The warn notice comes to us only if it's an employer that employs a significant number of people, or if it's a closure.
Can you, can you give us, get us the names of those businesses, please?
Yeah, I think I'll certainly will. I think I send them to, well, last quarter, I send them to Arnie. But we certainly can, we certainly will do that, and I'll send that to, send it to Mr. Lee. Is that what you'd like me to do?
Yes, please.
Certainly will.
Thank you so much, and thank you for that report. Thank you.
To the chair?
Yes.
Yeah, Jan.
Yeah.
I love your program with the kids. You know, I had one time six interns from losing her.
Yes.
And I thought that was a great, great program. I think that, you know, programs with the kids are great, and I'd like to, in the future, maybe, you know, do something like that again. So I'll be calling you.
Absolutely, anytime.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jan.
Are we good?
Okay.
Thank you so much, Jan.
Okay, my pleasure. Thank you. Good luck, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes.
The next one? Okay, thank you. Next, we have a presentation by Eric Newland.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
You can hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Go ahead, sir.
Mostly the video. Oh, wait, you cannot start your video because of those.
Are you gonna share a video?
Okay, so I'm hit Start Video. Your host, you cannot start your video because the host has disabled it. Says right there. Do you see me, though? Or hear me?
We see you. Would you like to just go ahead?
We see your picture. We don't see you.
Well, there's an X across that says Start Video. I thought we had that straightened out before.
We did.
Host has asked you to start your video. Okay, so let's see if that, okay, now there we go. We good?
Yes.
We see you now.
You see me? Hey, hello, everybody. Okay, so I'm Eric Newland, and I would like to thank you for this opportunity tonight that Olivia Valentine has enabled me to speak to about legislation that is currently in the House of Representatives, and it's in a committee that is chaired by the Honorable Maxine Waters. So first, I'd like to thank Olivia and Michael, you see, for tonight's opportunity to present and explain the urgency and the timeliness of a bill that's called HR 7809, otherwise known as the HOPE Act, and its impact on Hawthorne, its businesses, the city budget, and most importantly, the livelihoods of its people. A little bit of a backstory. What does CMBS stand for, and how does it impact Hawthorne? CMBS is known as Commercial Mortgage Backed Securities. That's what CMBS stands for, Commercial Mortgage Backed Securities. It's a type of a commercial mortgage. Most every commercial property owner, both small and large ones, rely on these mortgages to build or buy commercial properties, primarily apartments, malls, hotels, shopping centers, and office complexes, which employ millions of people across the country, and of course, thousands of those of Hawthorne residents. The pandemic has put all of these properties across the likes of which we have never seen. These property owners are unable to pay their mortgage payments, putting them in imminent danger of foreclosure through no fault of their own. How can an apartment complex owner foresee that many of their tenants would lose their jobs and be able to pay rent? How could a mall owner foresee that even the biggest brick-and-mortar retailer wouldn't be able to pay their bills? How could a hotel owner foresee the quarantines and travel bans imposed by the government, which are necessary to stop the pandemic, but force hotels to nearly close their doors? These property owners have not been given a break by their lenders, who are threatening to foreclose. In spite of that, hotel owners have offered rooms free for first responders. Apartment complex owners have let the rent slide and offered concessions, but their funds are rapidly running out, and foreclosures are imminent without government help. If commercial properties foreclose, layoffs will be inevitable. Workers at local malls will lose their jobs if commercial properties foreclose. Tax revenues will decline. Property taxes are how local governments pay their bills. Workers, for example, also in LAX or at the airport hotels will lose their jobs. And not only will they lose their jobs, but often they will also lose the accompanying health insurance for their families. So moreover, also that sales tax from these malls and hotels will also disappear. A foreclosure crisis in the CMBS market will ignite a financial and employment crisis which will hit communities like Hawthorne especially hard because of the working-class community. Fortunately, a bipartisan group of members of Congress came up with what is known as the HOPE Act to stop foreclosures and prevent a crisis. The HOPE Act is just what it means. It's not a bailout. It's a temporary type of low-interest loan to those with commercial real estate debt. It offers liquidity to those who own commercial real estate. And where the CARES Act, which was implemented back in the spring, was not able to work with CMBS loans because they did not qualify because of the structure of their debt. Those who pay the loan back in a short period of time will get a 3% interest rate. Those who take longer will have increasing interest rates, but they will be minimal. So our government and our taxpayers will be repaid as our country recovers. I have sent Olivia and Michael copies both of the full text of the legislation and of a summary with key points, and I understand that hopefully those were shared with those who are listening to me this evening. I would love your endorsement of this legislation and your assistance in bringing the Honorable Congresswoman Maxine Waters, who is the Chair of the Committee, of the Financial Service Committee, whose very immense influence on whether this bill lives or dies. We need your help in bringing her on board and convincing her that this is the right thing to preserve Hawthorne's revenues, protect Hawthorne's businesses, and protect the jobs of Hawthorne's residents as our country slowly and responsibly reopens. And with that, I'm happy to answer any of your questions, and I'm here or to speak with any of you individually after tonight's meeting. I have also enclosed some documents to, other than to Olivia, I mean, I sent to Olivia and Michael earlier this afternoon, and here is just a small list of national organizations that are currently supporting this legislation. You have the American Hotel and Lodging Association, the Asian American Hotel Owners Association, the National Association of Black Hotel Owners, Operators, and Developers, the Latino Hotel Association, Retail Industry Leaders Association, Commercial Real Estate Development Association, National Apartment Association, and the list goes on. And with that also, as of this evening, there are currently 29 cosponsors. What is up on the screen on my left, probably your right, is a copy of a bill, of the letter that was written to the Honorable Secretary of Mnuchin and Chairman Powell from the Fed. This letter preceded the HR 7809 bill, and what you can see is there are signatories of 101 legislators in a bipartisan spirit in support of this bill. So here we are. I have spoken across the country over the last number of months with chambers of commerce from the Midwest, and having the pleasure and the honor to speak with you this evening. And this is, I myself, by the way, by way of background in introduction, I am a former retailer. I'm a brick-and-mortar grassroots guy. I'm the former Chamber President of our chamber for a number of years, and also the only independent retailer in the Westchester County in New York Business Hall of Fame. I was in business for myself for 38 years. I understand from the grassroots what it was like in 2007, '08, in the banking crisis, what that was like when I needed money to help try to keep myself in business. And at that time, there really was no outlet. There were small business association loans, SBA loans, but they were not really made for me. In this particular case with commercial property and the CMBS loans, they are specific loans that have very real restrictions and guidelines to them. So that, so those who own properties in Hawthorne, for example, who have these loans, were not able to take advantage of the PPP money that was available earlier to them. This bill will offer a form of liquidity which will allow those with commercial mortgage-backed security loans to activate those loans, to help them in a crisis. And currently, right now, if we, if, you know, I'm ad-libbing here right now, but let's also take into consideration that as of July 31st, we know that that extra $600 a week check that was, that was put, you know, either in the mail or into your, into your bank account. You know, if you were two members of a working family, and you had children at home, you know, each, each family, the adults were, with unemployment, were making $700 or $800 a week. And they were able to then make possible, they were able to pay their rent and pay overheads, and if they had to pay into their health insurance and buy food and put clothes on their children's backs. Right now, that money does not exist for those. Right now, that money does not exist for those families, which makes it even more difficult for those people who live in apartments, um, you know, to meet their obligations to pay their rents. So evictions are something that, you know, is looming, um, which hopefully, you know, you know, uh, will, will, you know, there will be forbearance in in those particular situations. Um, but this liquidity that this bill offers is basically, it's not a, it's not a bailout. It's a, it's an opportunity if you meet the criteria and that criteria is laid out in a document which you do have.
Excuse me, Mr. Newland, you're at thirty seconds.
Okay, and you have a document saying Helping Open Properties Endeavor Act. And there are three pages to this document. And then, and on page two of the document, frequently asked, frequently asked questions. Who is eligible? Where are the terms, et cetera? So I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening um, and for you to consider um, uh, the, this legislation and the importance that it will have, you know, on your community as it has on so many communities across the country. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Does, I mean, we, we have time for a couple of questions?
I would love that.
Eric? Sure.
Okay, uh, who's, I think it was uh, Councilmember Taya? Yeah, Eric, the, yeah, this is a loan. Well, first of all, the, it's still in committee, right? It is, it hasn't.
Yes, there are twenty-nine, as we speak to this evening. The update that I have as of late this afternoon, there are twenty-nine co-sponsors of this bill. So it's in, it's in Maxine Waters' um, committee as we speak, because she's the Chair, as you know, of the committee.
Okay, now is, uh, well, the terms of the loan, how long is it for? What's the interest rate? How do they pay it back?
Right, okay.
How does that work?
Okay, so the terms of the loan, basically, if you look at page two of Frequently Asked Questions to help answer your question, um, the terms of the loan are that first of all, that you have to have a certain amount of liquidity, um, you know, in, in the building that you own. In other words, you can't be underwater, you know, to borrow money.
No, no, I got that. I assume everything is okay. How does the loan work?
You basically have seven years to, to um, to pay back the loan. Basically, and the interest rate is three percent.
Okay. Do you start paying it monthly immediately?
You, uh, no, you do not. You can wait till your year two of it. So that gives you time to, you know, get some breath and hopefully we'll have a vaccine by that time. Correct?
Right.
And, you know, and we, and the economy begins to, you know, exhale. And we begin to get back to a certain amount of normalcy that, you know, we have not, you know, um, have felt for, you know, since this early spring. And, but it gives an opportunity for the, for the man in the middle, you know, the monkey in the middle here, to sort of like be able to pay the debts that they owe to, you know, their, you know, their institutional lenders, right, who they owe money to. And and currently, you know, they're trying to work at the same time with the retailer, you know, the hotelier, the restaurateur, who basically has been basically shut down since March.
Is that tied into any no laying off employees or anything like that? Or that strictly just?
Well, I think that, you know, I think that was. I apologize. I didn't mean to speak over you. I apologize for that. I think the PPP originally, you know, you know, in a spirit, if we remember, you know, for those who were able to take out those loans, they, you know, had a formula, you know, seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent, right? Seventy-five percent of that money was to be dedicated and earmarked for those employees who currently at that time were not working. And twenty-five percent were supposed to be for operational costs, whether they were your utilities or your rent or overhead. So this bill, you know, is something that is fresh, and that's why it's called the HOPE Act. Because it, it, it offers hope to, to, to a group, a segment, you know, it's five hundred and fifty billion dollars, by the way, of debt that's involved with this. Um, and there is, there are numbers out there where basically I can quote here, um, some of the hardest industries such as lodging and retail have reached historic delinquency rates of twenty-four point three percent and uh, eighteen point one percent respectfully. Uh, foreclosed properties, you know, as we know, destroy jobs, impact local tax revenues, hurt communities. So um, this is, this is, this bill, um, in its infancy, because it's only was dropped on July the twenty-ninth, right? Um, is, part of it is, is, it's educational for me. It's educational for me to have the, the honor to speak with you tonight. It's, it's, it's an education, believe it or not, for all of those people on the house, in the house that I speak to. You know, um, I've speak to a number of legislative teams. I don't speak to the representatives themselves. Because to be honest with you, there's an education process that goes on here. You know, it's somewhat seemingly confusing, but at the end of the day, if this bill does not pass and we have five hundred and fifty billion dollars of debt out there, that also then impacts also the lenders, the banks, the Wells Fargos, the Banks of America, all the big banks, because they're looking to get, you know, they're, they're, don't forget, if remember from two thousand seven and eight, they had to put up a certain amount of, you know, capital reserve, right, for a rainy day. Well, they didn't expect the rainy day to hit as hard as this has hit. And, you know, I looked at their quarterly reports just to be very quick on this. Um, and I noticed that they had enough to hit, to, to absorb the initial salvo salvo of the first, of the last quarter. But now we're, you know, as you notice, as we know, the last two, two and a half months across the country, the pandemic, you know, was pretty rampant across the, you know, you know, in California, how it's impacted California.
Is the banking industry supporting this bill?
The banking industry, um, it, it's being supported right now by Secretary Mnuchin and Federal Chair Powell. The bank industry is, um, what they are to some degree, I hate to say it like this, but they're almost like creditors. There are those in the banking industry who've, who've loaned this money out, right, and packaged and packaged these into bonds, right? They, they, once they sell it, they really do not, they really do not care, to be very honest with you. Um, you know, it's kind of like a cold world out there for those in the middle here. That's why this legislation is so important, because they're basically taking a step back. I don't know if that answered your question. I hope.
It does, it does.
It's fair.
Yes.
Um, thank you, Eric, so much for that uh, explanation. I think we all got a very clear explanation of this bill and a really good education about the financial market. Thank you so much for that. Um, I, um, just, just one quick question. And that is, what is the trajectory of the bill? It's, it's in committee now. Where will it go after that?
Well, it's in committee right now. Um, it's being, right now, I'm talking to, you know, to members of, members of the House outside of the committee, right? You know, the House Financial Service Committee. I'm talking to people outside of appropriations.
When will it go to the floor of Congress, do you think?
Well, that's just a matter, you know, then, you know, it's, it's the question how they prioritize it, Olivia, because right now, you know, we have all, everything that's going on with the postal service, right? We have everything that's still going on with unemployment. So, you know, this sort of sits, you know, this is a priority for those, you know, in the middle. But it's not necessarily at the top of the list for those. So this will be packaged, this will not be a standalone bill, okay? This bill, you know, in time, because don't forget, Congress is also in recess, Olivia, right? You know, they're, because they're all running for election and reelection as we speak. So this, this is why it's taking people like myself to keep it in the forefront and those who work along with me to keep this in the forefront, you know, to the legislators themselves, to keep in the ears of the Congressman. So last week at this time, for example, if we had this conversation, we had the meeting last Tuesday, I would have told you that we had thirteen co-sponsors. And here we are a week later in a day, and we have twenty-nine co-sponsors. So you can see we're beginning to, you know, to pick up inertia, you know, and in support for the legislation. You saw also in the document that I presented to you that there were a hundred and one signatories on that. And it's really doing, you know, doing the legwork on my end, and, and those are part of our team's end to get them to come on board and to sign this legislation. And once it, once we pass this in the House, it'll probably fold it into the HEROES Act, because right, because if you remember in May, the HEROES Act was basically passed, you know, in the House of Representatives. And the Senate has basically, as you know, tabled the HEROES Act, because they don't want to pay six hundred dollars a week for those currently who are still, you know, on unemployment, et cetera. So there are negotiations that will be going on, but right now, um, that, where the bill is, it's still in committee, but it's still, it's being shocked outside of committee. And the more, for example, I'm, we're working really hard to get the Congressional Black Caucus on board, and it's fifty-five members. Um, and, 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 you know, and, and other, and other, and other, you know, and other groups right now to uh, participate and be part of this bill and understand that this really is urgent and extraordinarily timely. Um, otherwise, we could have, you know, even a larger economic calamity and a deeper recession.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to direct the city attorney to draft a resolution supporting the HOPE Act.
You want to?
Uh, to the Chair.
Um, so are you okay, Councilwoman Olivia Valentine, because you had something out on the floor? Would you, are you okay with, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Montero speaking?
Right, I want to, I want to ask the city attorney to draft a resolution supporting the HOPE Act.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, Mr. City Attorney, are you, uh, did you hear that? Are, are you, are you able to do that?
Uh, yes, I'll have it on for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to clarify something, uh, to Mr. Eric. So this, uh, this five hundred and eighty billion dollar so was coming from the Treasury Department, correct? So that's what you guys are looking at?
So, so just to clarify, okay, to be clear, the, the overall debt amongst all of this CMBS loans, if they were all to, if they were all to go into delinquency, would be five hundred and fifty billion dollars. So, so within that, there are, right now, from what I understand, there's close to forty billion dollars in, in, in foreclosure as we speak. So to try to, you know, put your thumb in the dykes, you know what I mean? To put your thumb in the dyke. You know, it's early, it's, it's better to try to act on this sooner than later, or there'll be many holes in the dyke and we won't be able to, you know, to plug up the holes. And that will then lead to really a calamitous situation, you know, economically, that goes above and beyond.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. So another question, have you uh, spoke with the Congresswoman Maxine Waters and, you know, her position on this?
Right now, Maxine Waters is, we have reached out to her legislative team, because we don't, we don't get the opportunity to speak with them directly. Uh, we have not had that success yet. My understanding in terms of her um, position, she is basically, you know, she's, she's neutral, as I understand it. I think it's, it's, it's going to be, just like I'm, you know, just like I've spoken with other, you know, the other Congresswoman, a man that's, that's the ranking member is a gentleman by the name of Patrick McHenry. He's a Republican. He's from the tenth district of North Carolina in Asheville, North Carolina, actually where the president was yesterday, just outside of Asheville. Um, he's supposedly pro-business. Um, and I think he's leaning towards supporting the bill. But, you know, everybody's sort of like, kind of like, you know, once the, we, you know, like anything else, you know, the first, you know, it's difficult to get the first people to sort of come on board, if you understand what I'm saying. It wasn't, it wasn't that for the CARES Act, of course, because we had to act immediately. And everybody, Republican, Democrat, no matter what you, you know, faith, religion, or anything else, everybody came on board, sort of get the country, you know, to lift the country up. This is the next level, and this was, this was, this CMBS debt was something that was not part of the original bill, because it could not have been acted on at that time. So this is requiring, as I said, a little bit of an education. And so having, having communities like Hawthorne and the unions, I'm speaking to, you know, a variety of different unions um, in, in, in Los Angeles County, who are working on a lot of the public, you know, projects, they're working at the LAX Airport, right, they're working on the rail. Um, you know, they're very supportive of this legislation, you know, in the, in local three hundred, I believe it is. Um, and I've spoken with their representatives. Um, so that's, you know, it's, again, this is a building out process. This is the first opportunity that I've had to be very honest, to speak to it, to, you know, to a council, you know, um, in, in a Zoom conference. I've certainly had plenty of conversations with um, uh, you know, Jim Claiborne's, Claiborne's office, you know, um, from, uh, from, from South Carolina. Um, and trying to get the Congressional Black Caucus, you know, on board with this. There's a little pushback, to be honest, from Rashid Talib. You know, um, um, she's giving a little bit of pushback, because she doesn't think that this, this address is enough of the needs of everybody, you know, or of the people, because she's, you know, she's on, she's on one extremity. And I believe that I've reached out to her office, to be honest with you, also, two or three times in the last week to get at least her to, to move off her, off the ledge and come to the middle to understand the significance of what this is all about, because it impacts everybody.
So it's my understanding that all those documents that you show us and, and actually have come to Ms. Valentine and our city manager, Chad O'Kee?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like the copy of all those documents, please.
Perfect. You, you, Olivia or Michael could, you know, concerning, you know.
Yes, we'll, we'll make sure you get them.
Yes, and, and, and if there are any further questions, by the way, please, after this is over, you know, after, after you kind of mute me and I, and I disappear into the, uh, into the atmosphere here, um, I'll be happy to answer any questions through Olivia or through yourselves by email or any other way that you would like to um, to um, get, to get your support.
Thank you so much, sir. Really appreciate you being here. Thank you for your time.
I thank, yeah, but I really thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
I'm going to invite Vaughn Norris, Director of Recreation and Community Services, who has a presentation. Uh, Mr. Vaughn Norris. Thank you again, Eric.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members. My, my name is Vaughn Norris, Director of Recreation and Community Service Department. Tonight, I will be giving an overview of two capital projects that the Public Works Department and the Parks Department have planned at Holly Park and Ramona Park. Uh, like, thank you for your time, and I hope you enjoy the presentation. And I can answer questions after I'm done with the overview. Uh, can I have the next page, please? All right, overview of the project, seventy-five percent of Los Angeles County voters approved Measure A in November of two thousand sixteen, which dedicates local funds for parks, recreation, and open space projects and their maintenance. Measure A supports safe neighbors, neighbor parks, gang prevention, tree planting, and senior and youth recreation. On March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, City of Hawthorne City Council approved Resolution eighty-one seventy-one, accepting major Measure A funding for this project. Next slide, please. Uh, just overview of Holly Park. Holly Park is one of our largest parks in the city, ten point five acres. Uh, currently, it consists of three baseball diamonds, two outdoor basketball courts, two full-size tennis courts, one older fitness zone and playground, wading pool, amphitheater, former, uh, excuse me, formal picnic area and restrooms. Next slide. Here are the upgrades and description of the project that we have in place. Uh, it includes improvement of barbecue pits and lighting for safety, one mile walking trail with six fitness stations and a master fitness zone. Uh, improving the playground with new equipment and a therapeutic garden, which would be our second community garden in the state of Hawthorne. Next slide, please. If you take a close look here at the, the map, it's going to display the walking trail, which is in purple, which calculates to one mile. Uh, those greens rectangle areas are going to be the fitness zones. So as community residents walk the trail, they'll have an option to stop at six fitness zones to exercise. And if you look towards the middle of the slide, um, in the south, uh, south bottom of the, the diagram, you'll see a larger green area, which is going to be our ma- master fitness zone, which will have a compilation of eight workout equipment, um, tools. Uh, if you take a look to the far right, the yellow area there, uh, that'll be the upgraded playground. And to the far right, uh, the turquoise area will be our new community garden. Um, some of the areas that have the purple small uh, squares will be our new lighting system, which will give safety, uh, visibility and create a safe environment for people of the community to come out and visit. And if you take a quick look at the bottom there, those are examples of the fitness zones that we plan to put at Holly Park. Okay, can I have the next slide, please? Um, that completes the Holly Park portion of the, uh, the capital project. Uh, we're going to talk about Ramona Park. Uh, currently, Ramona Park is one of our uh, smaller parks at five point six nine acres. It consists of two basketball courts, one, uh, two horseshoe pits, a wading pool, formal picnic area, and a playground. Our upgrades at Ramona Park will include improving the basketball courts with uh, backboards and rims, removing existing pavement and reconstructing new four-inch pavement and updating walkways. Uh, we will install volleyball pole extensions for multi-activity, and we will re-strike the floors. Uh, we, we'll also refurbish and paint all existing benches and ADA accessible exercise uh, area. Next slide, please. Here we have a map, a diagram of Ramona Park. If you notice the yellow uh, square, that will be our new improved basketball court that will have volleyball, volleyball extensions for uh, play. Left-hand corner will have our master fitness zone. We will improve the, the trails which are in gray. Um, and the turquoise areas are the benches that will be uh, updated and modified. Next slide. Okay, here's a little bit of information about the benefits of, of these projects.
Vaughn, Vaughn, could I ask a question, or do you want me to wait till the end?
Uh, you can ask now.
Yeah, can you go back to the previous one? Uh, so are you going to be, you know, where it's, where it has the map? Of Ramona.
Two slides back, please. Two slides back, please.
Are you, basically, my question is, are you gonna be doing a whole resurfacing of like the basketball court there?
Absolutely, Mayor. Um right now, the the court is distressed with uh root damage. Uh we plan to escalate all the the slurry, the the asphalt there, and lay a four-inch new uh asphalt surface.
Is um is the resurfacing of the court going to in any way force you to do anything that might hurt those trees that are there? That are causing that? Or are we gonna be able to have some mitigation type of thing so we don't hurt the trees?
It will be mitigation. No, we won't hurt the trees. We won't lose any trees in this project.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem. Any other questions? Oh, regarding that slide, before I move on? Okay, next slide, please. Uh the benefits of this project, uh upgrading playground equipment, complying with ADA requirements for everyone can use the the playgrounds, everyone has a free opportunity, incre- increasing pedestrian safety by improving lighting, promote healthy lifestyles by adding walking paths and various exercise machines, promote community engagement by adding more barbecue pits and a community garden. And lastly, uh beautify the parks by improving aesthetics. Uh here are some details regarding the cost of the project. Estimate cost is LA County Regional Park Measure A, seven hundred forty-eight thousand. Uh developmental development impact fees, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, which comes to a total for both parks, just a shade under one million dollars at nine hundred thousand. Um our estimated construction schedule uh is to start October twenty twenty uh and run through September twenty twenty-one. And that's just the estimated uh timeframe. So that concludes my presentation. Um I'd like to thank Public Works for their input and help with this presentation. Uh I'd like to thank uh Chief Ishi for helping with the presentation slides, and I'm here to answer questions if uh if needed.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh yes, thank you. Um thank you, Mr. Norris, for that presentation. This is very exciting. This is this is wonderful news for our residents who have, you know, I've heard so many times that they wanted the parks to be improved so they can enjoy taking their children to the parks. Um and I wanted to ask you about Holly Park in particular, the the trail. Uh it's going to be, I'm trying to get a picture of where that's going to be. Can you just describe where that's where that's going to be?
Chief, can I have you uh, I think it's slide four, maybe, and I can explain exactly where the trail's gonna start and end? One second, please. Well, wh- while the chief is doing that, I can explain vividly exactly where the trail's gonna start. For those that have frequent Holly Park, we have a snack bar. Um if you look at the 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 image there, the in the middle of the the photo there, we have a black rectangle. That is the snack bar, or excuse me, that's actually the formal picnic area. To the left is the snack bar. So right here, uh we'll start the trail, and from there, as you proceed to walk uh to the left and wrap around the the facility, and as you make it back to the snack bar, that will complete one mile.
I see.
So we're gonna we're gonna tap into the existing uh pathway that that's currently there between uh the parking lot and the baseball diamond and create a new walking trail that will wrap around both uh baseball diamonds.
That's real, that's really good. Um I, one of the things that um that I had received some complaints about uh from some of the residents were there there were areas in the park where um one of the residents expressed being afraid to have her children play because there were places where people could hide. And she was concerned that uh her children wouldn't be safe because um she they they couldn't be watched all the time. Are are you going to have any, are you going to do anything about the hidden areas where where um make perhaps make them more out in the open so that uh they're more visible visible?
Well, two things we're doing. Uh we are adding additional lights for safety, and we do have a pruning project that we're gonna cut back some of the the trees there that will create more lighting for those areas in question.
Okay. Sounds good. This is very exciting for us. I'm 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 sure the residents are going to be really, really pleased.
We're we're very excited. This will uh uh be an addition of our second walking trail in the city of Hawthorne. Um I'm excited, Public Works um Department's excited, our steering committee is very excited, and um with your blessings, we would love to move forward with this project.
Vaughn, I I have a question. The walking trail is, how's uh what what kind of texture is that gonna be? Is that gonna be like the trail uh along uh the four oh five?
Absolutely. It's gonna be a dirt and gravel mixture that's easy to maintain, easy to take care of, and and it's actually easy to add as needed. So it'll be a dirt and gravel DG mix that we will use for that walking trail.
Okay. Yeah, how 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 long is that, the entire, have you, h- how long is the walk? I mean, if uh
The walk that we have currently mapped out will be one mile.
One mile, uh uh you know, um one time around is one mile?
One time around is one mile, and um I have to mention that between that one mile, you have six workout stations to actually interact into, which is a great plus to that walk.
And that on the top of your, that's a hundred and twentieth, right? And then on the left side, is that what the Venice?
Y- yes, you're correct. Uh one-twentieth would be on the left-hand side, which enters to Holly Park, or excuse me, on the top side. Yes, and the left side would be Venice.
Okay. Okay, that's a nice park. I mean, we've rented, we've we've used that diamond there.
It's one of our jewels in the city. I'm very proud to oversee and help Public Works with this project.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh hi Vaughn, thank you for the presentation. Uh like Ms. Valentine said, this is a great uh projects because, you know, parks, they always said, you know, uh park is very fundamental for the grown-on-the-city and to bring new residents when they see parks. That is well capped and beautiful. So yeah, so you guys have been doing outstanding job over there, so I appreciate that uh for Ramona and also for Holly Park. My question, I don't know if you can answer. Uh is there is a plan for us to do some work likes uh at the Jim Thorpe Park, you know?
Yes, I'm I'm glad you uh asked that question. Currently, right now, uh my department's working on uh rehabbing the walking trails, as I mentioned earlier, the dirt and gravel DG. So in the next uh upcoming weeks, we're gonna backfill those walking trails. Uh we're gonna work with our vendor Parkwood uh to beautify some of those areas that have been neglected. Uh constantly uh looking at the parks to see what upgrades and what modifications are needed.
It is possible to see some funding coming from Measure A A for the uh exercise equipment at the Jim Thorpe? Or no?
Yes, there's a possibility. I'll take a look at that. Uh Measure A funding recycles every year. Uh maintenance of those former projects, so we can take a closer look at that moving forward.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, hey Vaughn, you're doing a great job with the uh with the parks. Uh Jim Thorpe, uh that bathroom needs a little work over there.
Will do. We'll take care of that.
Okay, and that's all.
Thank you for that.
Hey, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Thank you, Vaughn.
All right, you guys ready? All right, thank you. Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
Sir, during oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies, as a body, shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
What do you got for us?
So we actually have two oral comments and then about uh and quite a few written comments. So I'm actually going to uh stop my video. You'll still be able to hear me, because I'm gonna have Diana help me with all this, so we're gonna be coordinating.
Thank you.
Okay. So first, we have Mr. Matt Zarro speaking. Uh go ahead, Matt. Mr. Zarro, you have three minutes.
Dear Hawthorne City Council, This is Matt Zarro. I have been a resident of Hawthorne for over five years and have spent most of my life living in the South Bay. I am a member of Street Watch LA, but I am speaking today on my own behalf. Through my work with Street Watch, I have come to know and befriend several people who are unhoused in Hawthorne. This includes my friends Dawn and her husband Mike, who have been trying to get off the streets because Mike has a deadly heart condition. There are, they are still on the streets tonight because there are not enough services for unhoused people in our community. I have been calling into these meetings because Hawthorne is neglecting its unhoused population and in many cases actively making life harder for them. My faith as a Christian calls me to do anything I can to help the unhoused. For when we serve the poor, we serve Christ. As a council, you have chosen mostly to pass me and my concerns off to city employees. And while I have had positive interactions with them, I expect more out of leaders. If Mayor Vargas and the members of this council displayed half of the concern and interest in the unhoused, as they have for landlords of this city, or apparently also hotel owners who refuse to participate in Project Room Key, if they had half of the concern they have for those kinds of people, the policy towards unhoused people would be radically different. I know it is easy to ignore the poor in this city, have not reeled significantly less power than have do. And you and all of you will likely get reelect reelected despite your negligence. Good leaders, however, do not always do what is easy. Good leaders sometimes must do what is moral, just, and loving, even when it is hard or unpopular. Tonight, I am inviting each of you to become leaders that fight for the poor and advocate for the unhoused. Not because it is popular or will win you votes, but because it is the right thing to do. This week, I have, I am asking the city of Hawthorne to uh I've been asked by the city of Hawthorne to call churches on behalf of the city to see if they would be interested in hosting safe parking for citizens living in their cars. Mayor Vargas and council members, I will extend an invitation for you to do this work as well. You should be calling churches and other houses to worship this week. I imagine getting a call from the mayor or a council member will take will be taken more seriously than one from a random and concerned citizen. I'm calling once again on this council to put an end to sweeping unhoused encampments in Hawthorne. One, that the Hawthorne PD just yesterday threatened to to sweep an encampment in Hawthorne. Not only is this practice immoral, it is unproductive and expensive. Unhoused people need services to help stabilize their lives so they can do the work of getting off the streets. They do not need city officials sweeping and terrorizing them, adding more instability to their already difficult lives. And Mayor Vargas, please do not tell your city official to contact me again. Don't pass this off to someone else. I'm already in contact with city workers. I want you personally engaged in this issue. Do you know any unhoused people in your city? Have you sat down with any of them? Have you talked with any of them? Have you prayed with any of them? I wonder how many landlords you know, and how often do you take time to take their concern? My hope is that if you took the time to get to know the unhoused people in your city, heard their stories and listened to their prayers and their dreams, your heart would be moved, like it has with mine, to fight for them.
Sir, you have thirty seconds.
Do you promise to be a city of good neighbors and to be an example to the rest of the South Bay by ending sweeps and start providing life-saving services to the unhoused humans living in our city? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Uh real quick, Mr. Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
Do we have a housing, uh homeless uh homeless services coordinator?
We do, and uh that's something that um you know, we we have one that's full-time assigned to the city. Um we're also working to expand um the the reach of that program by bringing other um either nonprofits in board or actually bringing other um uh arms to work with that coordinator.
Or have has the homeless task force uh services coordinator made contact with the majority of the homeless in our city?
I I I don't know exactly how many people that the coordinator has reached out to, but um yeah, he he is certainly our subject matter expert on on this issue um and and where our our um where that population is. Um I know that the individual that um individuals that that have been referenced by this caller have been in contact numerous times um by the coordinator.
Okay, so so they, so we were in contact with them and we're working with them. So there we, if you guys could give us some type of update on that specific case.
Yes, we can. And I would I would just add that, you know, as the council knows and the community knows, this is um o- obviously, it's it's a regional issue. Um it's very complex, and it's not a one-size-fits-all approach to solve this. Um and so uh we're working with our regional partners um to uh to manage as best we can.
All right, so it's uh as I was made aware, these individuals were contacted even previously before the caller started calling about this, but okay. Uh let's let's see if we can find some resolution to that quickly. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, next, please.
Yes, next is Mr. Delgado. Go ahead, Mr. Delgado. You have thirty, you have three minutes.
Yes, hello, good evening. How is it, and do you do, five, one, three, seven, three? I have been, you know, I do, uh, think you guys are doing, you know, in the city of Hawthorne. And the kind that just makes me very upset where, you know, sometimes when I need to take a walk on Inglewood and Hawthorne, you know, I sit here and stumble over a lot of you guys' re- reelection signs all over the city. I mean, it's very making uh the city very ugly when you put a sign in somebody property and they don't allow it. They sit here and take it and throw it in the sidewalk or throw it in the trash. And sometimes when they throw it in the sidewalk, household people, we 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 don't see at night, so we trip. Um you know, I tried to email Mrs. Valentine and Mr. Montario for this uh subject, and they they don't uh reply to me, maybe because I'm very old. But what I'm uh trying to get to is uh, you know, you guys need to have some more common sense for this type of situation because uh, you know, I know everybody's fighting for, we, we, we but you know, to get elected by us if you keep doing this uh very ugly transaction. This is very ugly where uh, you know, I I see a lot of stuff on the on the properties of the city. You know, we 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 taxpayers uh shouldn't be calling the city to come take this stuff out and it's costing us money. I mean, we barely have any money to 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 keep this going. So what I'm mentioning right here is you guys need to grow a little bit up and uh stop putting uh signs where it doesn't belong, especially in city property. And uh I don't want to mention any names and put anybody on blast, but you you know who you are. And please uh take the initiative to stop doing this and uh answer your emails, because we are the people who are going to elect you. Remember this. We are the people of Hawthorne, that we're going to elect you, my 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 uh people and you, you know. And uh this is uh never seen this ugliness ever in my life. Uh the last time I seen something like this on properties, and the more is uh when we had that uh Brown, Mr. Brown guy, whatever his name was, come over here. So please, uh it it it, this is not what we want in the city. Uh Mr. Mayor and uh Mr. the 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 Talade, please uh do your job very uh right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado.
Thank you.
Okay, the next comments are um emails that we received. So the first email reads, "I live in Holly Glen and drive the roads of one hundred and thirty-fifth in front of a school in Aviation and Douglas, roads near to schools and filled with bicycling students. And notice that all three of these roads are routinely traversed by people driving at greatly excessive speeds. I stick to the speed limit and notice people absolutely blowing past me in their car or motorcycle. Living here for two years now, I've never once seen an officer, say, with a radar gun on a motorcycle scanning speeds or actually writing someone a ticket. As someone with two toddlers riding with me in my car, I fear for their safety. As a parent who sees the kids of others biking and walking on these same streets, I fear for theirs. I would like for the city to declare road safety a priority, in particular speeding, and to work with a PD with the PD to ensure speed limits are aggressively enforced. Given that speeding is the number one cause of fatal car accidents, this should matter both to the city and the PD. It certainly matters to me. Thank you, John Markovici." Okay, next. Uh, "Dear Council, dear City Council, my name is Lenia, and I am a constituent residing in Hawthorne, California. I'm writing to you today to demand uh divestment from the Hawthorne Police Department and the relocation of those funds to community resources that have been neglected. Hawthorne Police Department is currently receiving more than sixty percent of the city's budget. Meanwhile, our community members are lacking basic support. The current pandemic has made our marginalized communities more vulnerable than ever. Currently, there is a quantifying lack of COVID-nineteen testing centers available. Our unhoused population is increasing. Our families are at risk of being evicted." Our families are at risk of being evicted and unemployment rates are not likely to decrease anytime soon. The lack of community resources such as COVID-nineteen testing, mental health services, and rental protection has affected me and others by forcing many to choose between employment, risk of illness, risk of losing housing, and mental health. I stand with the demands listed by the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance. What specific changes are you making to protect and serve our communities that does not criminalize our black and brown residents? I urge you to take initiative and invest in long-term strategies for education, healthcare, housing, and employment programs. Sincerely, yours, Constituent in Hawthorne, Ms. Lenia." Next. "Good evening. My name is Gloria and I'm a lifelong Hawthorne resident. I'm calling to voice my concerns about the tremendous amount of funding Hawthorne PD is currently receiving. As a taxpayer, I want more of our funds to be allocated towards better community resources, not the police. How will the city council go about doing this? The city is getting more and more attention and money due to SpaceX. So why is the money and attention not being put towards the lifelong low-income residents that have been here for twenty-plus years? The more than half of the budget for the HPD should be going towards rent aid, food aid, et cetera. I will end by emphasizing my support for the demands brought to the city by Hawthorne Abolition Alliance these couple of months. At least acknowledge our requests and demands. Do not let us be voiceless." So the next, uh, Diana's gonna read the next one.
"Good evening. My name is Ruth Mejia and I am a Hawthorne resident. I am calling to voice my concerns about the tremendous amount of funding Hawthorne PD is currently receiving. As a taxpayer, I want more of our funds to be allocated towards better community resources, not the police, as well as having the policeman and its office workers to do more of a better job when it comes to listening to the victims who have been sexually assaulted, raped, or anything else. The Hawthorne PD failed to do their jobs and it comes to be demanded that the police take it more seriously and not as a mistake of two children. Do better." The next one. "Uh, dear Hawthorne City Council, my name is Alexandra and I am a constituent in Hawthorne, California. I am writing to you today to demand a divestment from the Hawthorne Police Department and the reallocation of those funds to neglected community services. Hawthorne Police Department is currently receiving more than sixty percent of the city's budget. Meanwhile, our, our black and brown community members are lacking basic support. The current pandemic has made our marg- marginalized communities more vulnerable than ever. There is an insufficient number of COVID-nineteen testing centers available. Our parks are lacking basic essentials. Our unhoused population is increasing. Our families are at risk of being evicted and unemployment rates are likely to decrease anytime soon. I stand with the demands listed by the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance. What specific changes are you making to protect and serve our communities that does not criminalize our black and brown residents? I urge you to take initiative and invest in long-term strategies for education, healthcare, housing, and employment programs. Sincerely, your constituent in Hawthorne, Alexandra." Next one. "Hello, I live right in front of an AMCO ornamental iron welding factory that burns iron every day of the week, including Saturday and Sunday from seven AM all the way to five PM and sometimes even earlier than that. The noise coming from that factory, factory is truly disturbing in all aspects, causing my brother who just started virtual classes to be unable to focus and concentrate. During this pandemic, the noise has become unbearable and impossible to drown out given that we have to maintain ourselves at home. And with this summer heat, we have no op, no other option than to open up our doors to let in the breeze. Apart from the noise and many mornings of interrupted sleep, we are very concerned about our health and the pollution that this factory causes. Aside from the dust that gets carried into the houses, there is also the concern of carcinogens polluting our city and affecting our health. Everyone in my household has allergies and both of my brothers were born with bronchitis and asthma. These are not illnesses that run in the family, so we are therefore attributing them to pollution coming from this factory. Also, there are many studies correlating the burning of metals to brain damage and many other respiratory illnesses as well as cancers. In addition, there have been many nights where the workers from the factory unload big pieces of metal between the hours of one AM to three AM interrupting sleep. I have called the police to handle the situation, but it occurred again the following night, highlighting the fact that there truly is no consideration for those of us who live nearby. This factory and whoever is in charge of it truly has no regulations that seem to consider the well-being of the neighbors of the city of Hawthorne, and we hope there can be a solution to this very big dilemma. Thank you."
To the Chair.
Uh, yes.
Um, I'd like to um, ask uh, the city manager to follow up on that uh, complaint and uh, investigate that to see um, what the details are and whether there's something that uh, that we, we need to do to mitigate the situation.
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one, uh, next email is from Ms. Alacorn. "I'm attaching a few pictures of a tire shop that is next to Dolpho Auto Mechanic Shop on Imperial and Pomona Avenue. My concern is that BNT Tire Shop uh, stated that they are a tire shop yet provide mechanic services as a Dolpho Auto Shop. Years ago, the city would send out notices of a new business coming in. This didn't happen and hasn't happened in the past ten to fifteen years. It's frustrating um, and a lack of respect to the homeowners and residents. These businesses coming in are taking over and affect their quality of living. We need the city to look out for our well-being. Sincerely, uh, Leslie Alacorn." Um, and I went ahead and forwarded those uh, images over to the elected officials. Next.
Mr. City Manager? I, I thought that issue was already resolved with both of those. I mean, if they're still performing like incorrect services, they need to be taken a look at.
Uh, yeah, this is news to me and I will investigate.
Okay, thank you.
Next. Um, "Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Marie Centron. I'm a Hawthorne resident. We have reported illegal renting of two mobile homes on the yard of one-one-three-zero-eight Pomona Avenue a year ago and have seen no action on the city's behalf. Without going into detail of broken violations, we have been patient and understand things get backed up. But a year, it's disappointing and unacceptable. This is why I'm reaching out to the council. We are hopeful for your prompt attention in this matter. Thank you, Marie Centron."
Uh, Mr. City Manager, once more, please.
Yes, sir. Next. Uh, "Hello, my name is G. Salvatiera from the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance. I do not want Hawthorne to be the next Kenosha, Minneapolis, or Ferguson. No amount of police reform can stop police brutality. I'm calling to ask for a response to the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance's demands to begin and end to violence in Hawthorne, California by investing in the people in our community rather than giving more than half our budget to this fund, to fund state violence and collecting revenue from big corporations. What is the city council's plan? What deadlines do you plan to meet? How are you all protecting our small businesses? How are you all supporting residents contracting COVID? How are you all supporting recently unhoused residents? How will you change the budget to reflect our city's needs? None of the changes you make by receiving federal grants will be enough to repair the damage of what is currently done in our city. What will you do to avoid blood on your hands? Thank you and I yield my time. G. Salvatiera."
Thank you.
"Good afternoon. As your constituent, I wanted to express my concerns regarding the lack of action and response on behalf of city council to the residents who have been demanding the defunding of the Hawthorne Police. I understand COVID-nineteen and the current timing have been barriers. However, the least our community needs is for the police to continue to take away funds that could be more beneficial in other areas. As Hawthorne Abolition Alliance has expressed to you all during one of uh, during one-on-one meetings, funds need to be reallocated immediately. Be the first city to take proper action. Defund HPD. Our marginalized communities are caused the most harm by PD yet are the most ignored when voicing these concerns. Do better, City Council of Hawthorne. Do more." The next one. "Dear Hawthorne City Council, my name is Lawrence and I am a constituent in Hawthorne, California. I am writing to you today to demand a divestment from the Hawthorne Police Department and the reallocation of those funds to neglected community services. Hawthorne Police Department is currently receiving more than sixty, sixty percent of the city's budget. Meanwhile, our black and brown community members are lacking basic support. The current pandemic has made our marginalized communities more vulnerable than ever. There is an insufficient number of COVID-nineteen testing centers available. Our parks are lacking basic essentials. Our unhoused population is increasing. Our families are at risk of being evicted and unemployment rates are not likely to decrease anytime soon. How can you consciously give the Hawthorne Police Department so much money when we're suffering? When we're in the middle of a global pandemic, what is wrong with you? I stand with the demands listed by the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance. What specific changes are you making to protect and serve our communities that does not criminalize our black and brown residents? I urge you to take initiative and invest in long-term strategies for education, healthcare, housing, and employment programs. Sincerely, your constituent in Hawthorne, Lawrence." Next one. "Good evening. My name is Hansel and I am a Hawthorne resident, as well as a member of Good Neighbors of Hawthorne. We've worked with South Bay Community Care and Ears to the Streets LA to address the city's problems. We have met with all city officials and we have yet to see any action. I'm calling to voice my concerns about the tremendous amount of funding Hawthorne PD is currently receiving. As a taxpayer, I want more of our funds to be allocated towards better community use, community resources, not the police. I will end by emphasizing my support for the demands brought to the city council by Hawthorne Abolition Alliance these past couple of months. We ask that you all give us space to talk during today's meetings. We have questions that need answers."
"Dear Hawthorne City Council, I'm Dylan Little, Hawthorne resident, and I'm writing to request reinvest, reinvestment from the police and community to services that would make a positive impact on our community. I stand with the demands listed by the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance. Sixty percent of our city budget is too much for a department that doesn't make its residents safer. That could make a huge difference for many programs in the city. Thanks for your consideration, Dylan Little." "Hello, I'm a concerned resident of Hawthorne, trying to figure out why fifty-two percent of the city budget is going to policing. That seems extremely excessive considering the era of a lot of other, sorry, considering there are a lot of other resources that seem to be lacking in our community. Is the city council planning on revisiting the budget, especially in the wake of BLM movement and killings of Breonna Taylor, George Floyd, Tony McDade, and just yesterday, the murder attempt of Jacob Blake? Also concerned that an org submitted request for data and was not only given, was not only given no help, but a lack of care was put into the response by the clerk. Please help us understand. Warmly, Byron Barahona." Next is but from Tony Akari. Um, "I have noticed that Mike Tayera and Alex Vargas have been posting their banners and signs in public places. I'm pretty sure that is against the law to hang signage on public property. They do not look good and they are creating trash all over the place. I would like for my concern to be read out loud during the city council meeting. Thank you, Tony Akari."
"Mr. Jimenez, here are some concerns brought up by our board members and neighbors. We are asking our mayor and council members for support on important issues, concerns. Number one, enforcement of COVID-nineteen protocols. Please step up monitoring of our parks. Eucalyptus Park regarding wearing of face coverings and social distancing. Please enforce restrictions against large gatherings. Why is Coast Fitness allowed to conduct business as usual when in LA County all gyms are supposed to be closed? Number two, more monitoring of our parks against pot smokers. Children only have Eucalyptus Park for physical activities and they should be protected from harmful drugs. Number three, parking permits. Moratorium on issuance of these permits a couple of years ago. Issue seems to have fallen through the cracks. What is being done to improve parking situation in Hawthorne? Number four, have there been any monetary savings as a result of closure of City Hall during the pandemic? If so, how much? How are these monies going to be used? Yours for a stronger Hawthorne, Ruben Sanchez, North Hawthorne Community Association."
That is the end of public comments.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay. Oral communication is closed. Order. Mr. Clerk, can we have your consent calendar, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, you may. Mr. Mayor, I have seven items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item eight, approval of city council minutes for the regular meeting of June twenty-third, twenty-twenty, and the special meeting of August eleventh, twenty-twenty. Item nine, approval of waiver of full readings of, of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item ten, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item twelve, resolution number eight-two-two-eight, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving and authorizing submission of application for CalRecycle Household Hazardous Waste Grant Program for which the city of Hawthorne is eligible. Item thirteen, resolution number eighty-two-thirty, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, delegating authority to the city manager for determining industrial disability pursuant to government code sections two-one-one-five-six and two-one-one-seven-three. Item fourteen, resolution number eight-two-three-three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving a side letter agreement between the city of Hawthorne and the Hawthorne Police Management Supervisory Group, amending the memorandum of understanding between the parties effective July first, twenty-twenty through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Item set fifteen, resolution number eight-two-three-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, supporting SB fourteen-ten Emergency Rental Assistance Program, if amended to include a provision to protect landlord from foreclosure for adoption."
I would like to pull fifteen for a discussion, please.
Okay, I make a motion on all items up to fourteen.
Second.
Um, it's been moved by me and seconded by Mayor Protem on this one. Um, please vote. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayera?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Yeah. Discussion.
Alright, so I'm just, so fourth, uh, fifth, um, I'm sorry, resolution eighty-two thirty-two, which is um, supporting SB fourteen-ten is not balanced. It offers protection to the tenants from eviction. Um, rent would be deferred four years until twenty-twenty-four and the tenant would be given ten years to complete paying the deferred rent. Um, this is very unfair to landlords. Um, and the city has no power to amend this bill. The city either has to support it or reject it. Um, in order to change it, it has to be changed by the legislator who wrote it or someone else in the legislature and adopted by this legislature. Um, and it seems to me that this is um, there's very little likelihood that such a change is going to be made. Um, this is written by a legislature which understandably is very sympathetic to tenants, but doesn't understand the entire picture. Because if the tenants don't pay their rent, the landlords can't meet their mortgages. And if there's no assistance for mortgage, there's no assistance for landlords, um, they'll go under. And then the tenants will still be out of um, out of their homes. So um, I find this very unbalanced and I don't feel that the, the addition that the um, the addition that was proposed that we make here would do any, would, would do any good at all because we are, we do not have the power to change this bill.
To the Chair. Yes.
Yeah, I agree with uh, Councilwoman Valentine. This is a bad, a bad uh, law. I don't think that it's um, it doesn't take into consideration the damage that this could do to the smaller property owners and the foreclosures and um, the, the problems that, that it could bring. Um, it's asking the landlord to be the safety net as opposed to the government. The government should be the safety net. It shouldn't be up to landlords to um, to underwrite uh, to underwrite this law. Plus, it probably would be challenged because I can't believe that this would pass constitutionality. I think that a lot of people will challenge this law. It's very unfair. So I agree with the, with uh, Councilwoman Valentine. I can't support this.
Uh, to the Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I um, I believe, you know, there is more into this bill because there was some uh, language there about giving uh, landlords, you know, tax incentives or tax break, whatever, uh, uh, on their annual um, income tax returns. Um, it is possible, uh, I don't know if Russell cannot- Um, it is possible, uh, I don't know if Russell cannot instead of approve this resolution is to send a letter that uh, this bill needs to be modified to deal with the landlord's issues. Uh, because it's not a complete package that would help the tenants and also help the landlord, how, how we balance those two. So maybe we should tell them to, because I think this, this bill is still on committee, right? They have not gone to the uh, Assembly Floor yet. Uh, maybe there is still time for them to make some amendment to the bill before it goes to the to the final vote in the committee, then they go to the legislature. So maybe we should tell them they need to amend some, some of this bill before we can give them a full support.
I can certainly do that letter.
Yeah.
And bring it back for the next agenda.
Alright, thank you, Russell.
Next slide, okay, next section. Number eighteen.
Yes, now is the time and place for a public hearing for consideration of an amendment to the Fiscal Year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Action Plan to allocate Community Development Block Grant Funding from the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act and Home Investment Partnership Funds and an amendment to the Citizen Participation Plan. No written communications were received.
To the Chair. Uh, just a mo- uh, just a moment, we're going to ask for uh, any comments from the public first? Mister City Clerk?
Yeah, no, no written communications.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yeah, you know, this is uh, we're, we have a problem, you know, right now, we have a pandemic. We don't know how long that's gonna last, it could last six months, could last a year. I don't think it's gonna be more than six or eight months. And we have the opportunity now to implement some programs that would help our tenants in our city. Not the tenants in the world, but the tenants in our city. Uh, and I was having a conversation today with the City Manager suggesting that we could utilize uh, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and uh and add that to the funds that are available for um, for rental uh, relief. And uh, and I think that we should do that, I think that we should take this opportunity right now when there is an emergency and divert the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars available with this uh, program and add it to the tenant-based rental assistance. And between the three programs, you're gonna have five-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty, four-hundred-thousand. You'll have approximately a million seven available for uh, for the tenants that are in trouble right now. And that will give us an opportunity to find out how many tenants we have in the city that have a problem. And so, um, since everyone is doing emergency uh, moves right now to help uh, the tenants, I think that this would be a good move. Uh, the City Manager and I sat down, we talked about that. We checked with the uh, Housing Manager. Uh, everything would be okay, we could actually divert that money into that program. And we can have a robust program to help our uh, tenants that may be uh, falling behind. And so I, I'm, I don't know if we have to have a, a special uh, uh, resolution or can we just amend this one and accept? Uh, City Manager, you wanna?
Yeah.
Oh, Mister City Manager, can you, you respond to his uh, inquiry?
So uh, yeah, uh, Councilor Toledo brings up um, a, a, a good opportunity for the city. Um, just, you know, to summarize what was presented in this um, this action item for the council today with this hearing is we were looking to allocate a total of uh, nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand uh, in uh, in funds we're receiving from the federal government under the uh, CDVG and home programs uh, to provide rental assistance. Um, and what Councilmember Toledo is, is mentioning is that as, as part of this reallocation, there's, there's also another seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that's programmed um, for community-based development organizations. Uh, and uh, the city has not committed to that aspect of the program, although we do have um, some, some plans to get there. Um, and it's wholly within the, the city's right to um, add that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars um, to essentially the nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand we were already talking about. And so, um, you know, the, the, the impact of doing that um, essentially is we'd be able to um, nearly double our reach on the rental assistance program that we're um, asking the council to consider tonight. Um, that it's not a one-for-one exchange in the sense that the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, if we transition that towards uh, tenant-based assistance. Um, there are some administrative fees that would be associated with it, um, and I believe those um, uh, would result in about a six-hundred-thousand-dollar net add to the rental assistance program. Um, our Housing Manager Kimberly Mack is on the line, um, and she can uh, confirm what I'm saying and, and provide a little more context. And I believe uh, the city's consultant uh, that's worked on helping to present this today is also with us, and so um, as Councilmember Toledo mentioned, um, it, it is our, uh, we, the council does have opportunity to uh, accept this uh, recommendation as it's been presented or amend it in some fashion. Um, and, and where the hope is, is that we can uh, get the council to uh, agree on a path uh, on this tonight, so we can start this program. And so Kimberly, are you on the line and is there anything you'd like to add before uh, the council talks about this a little more?
I am on the line and you have um, expressed it correctly. We do have, if we take the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and add it to the four-hundred uh, thousand that is currently in the tenant-based rental assistance program, adding that to the CDVG CD funding that was provided to us through the CARES Act, we'd have approximately one-point-six million to offer to Hawthorne City residents um, for rental assistance, which they have not received through other county programs to date.
And then to confirm, i- if, if this is what the council wanted to do, essentially uh, the motion that we articulated in the staff report would essentially just have, have to uh, amend um, uh, what the, the draft plan has suggested and, and reallocate that seven-hundred-and-fifty towards rental assistance um, and uh, the accompanying uh, administrative costs associated with that too, is that right?
Absolutely, we make the recommendation that you approve the draft um, with the modification that you're asking that those funds be relocated to the TBRA program.
So, so I think that the, the um, the action item for the council is A, um, do you want to reallocate um, our federal funds um, uh, directed towards CDVG and home in the manner we suggested? And then two, um, do, do you want to change the amount uh, like Councilmember Toledo has suggested? Um, and then wh- once we have direction on that, we can, we can articulate a, a correct motion for you uh, to move this item forward.
To the Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Miss May. Uh, to Eric and, and Kimberly. Um, uh, thank you for putting this proposal together, uh, because you know, last month I asked you guys to find out about the CARE Act and to bring this money forward for the Tending Assistance Program. Now, the question about that seven-hundred-and-fifty thou- fifty-thousand dollar, is that money was already allocated in our twenty twenty-one budget for the uh, affordable housing?
So those funds were allocated for the CHODO, we, you guys, the City Council approved a RFP last year and that money was held for the CHODO, the CHODO has not been certified, we have no contract in place. With the waiver that HUD has uh, provided us for the COVID nineteen pandemic, it allows us to move those funds and use them for the TBRA assistance, waiving the requirement of having to fund a CHODO.
And so you have not received no application for the CHODO?
We did receive an application for the CHODO, but the applicant has been less than compliant with providing the information that's required and therefore they are still not certified.
Okay, alright, okay, so I, I, I will second the motion from Mike to move that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, you said six-hundred-thousand because of administration costs to the rental assistance program.
Okay. What do we do, have a vote? Mister City Manager, is that, is that acceptable?
So I, I think it is, um, Russell, can, can you help us uh, formalize what the, the rep, the, I guess the motion for the council would be? Uh, we've articulated five uh, motions or explicitly indicated five motions in the staff report. I, I think, you know, potentially, it's uh, it's item number two, approve the amendment um, um, as amended during the council meeting uh, by the council and then everything else would, would carry on, does that make sense to you?
Uh, yes.
Does uh?
Is there, is there a deadline on this, Kimberly?
There is um, not a deadline, we want to start to get the program going because there is a, a great administrative burden to this large sum of money that we would be moving to this. As far as the applications being provided, being translated in Spanish, staffing to process these applications and things of that nature. So it's administratively needs to be started as soon as possible.
So uh, once more, Mister City Clerk, I mean, I'm sorry, Mister City Manager, is this in sync with what you guys were envisioning?
It is, it's uh, yeah, I, I think that um, reallocating that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, um, you know, we're, we're in a, uh, in a pandemic. Um, and this is a real help for uh, the residents of our community now. Um, the opportunity cost is, is there, there's a, a low income or affordable housing project uh, that we had hoped to do a- as a city that um, uh, you know, that project won't, won't happen right now, but certainly those would be opportunities in the future that we can deal with.
Sounds like a great idea, um, tenant-based rental assistance, TBRA suffered a lot like in, like about like eight years ago, I guess uh, Congress had uh, went after, had gone after C uh, CDVG funds and tenant-based rental assistance was one of the first things to get impacted. So uh, I'm glad to hear that my councilmember colleagues uh, and the mayor, uh, Councilmember Taeda and Mayor Protem Montero uh, made the suggestion, so thank you guys.
So I move.
So I think to clarify, it, it, the, the motion is what, what is articulated in the staff report, which is uh, and on the agenda, which is quite verbose um, with the, the amendments that the, the, the council has considered during this meeting at, at this point.
Who seconded it?
Mike.
Alright. Are we ready for a vote?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Okay. Councilmember Wad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and City Council voting yes.
Okay. Orders number twenty?
Alright, and just to be clear, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip the staff's recommendations, correct?
So I think that, that's correct, it's the, 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 the motion is um, what was articulated in the staff report and um, as amended by the council.
Perfect. Uh, ordinance number uh, twenty, uh, ordinance number two-two-zero-seven, second reading. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California amending section one-point-zero-eight-point-zero-three-zero city name and seal of Title One, General Provisions of the Hawthorne Municipal Code Regarding Use of the City Seal for Adoption.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Wad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and City Council voting yes.
Item number twenty-two, do we need to move on with this, is this still pending, Miss uh, Miss Kimberly Mack?
So this is the program that goes along with the action plan amendment, uh, substantial amendment, this, these are the details and the guidelines that we have set forth before the City Council. A couple of weeks ago, uh, Protemp Mayor, Mayor Protemp Alex Montero asked us to put something in writing regarding this. And so this program, like many others, uh, grants the income-eligible families a maximum of a thousand dollars per month for up to three consecutive months, paid directly to a qualified owner. The city will be granting approximately now one-point-six million of home and CDVG CD funding for this program. And we anticipate the launch towards the end of September, should all go well. But we expect it to go very quickly, meaning we expect a high quality of uh, uh, applications, a high quantity of applications. Um, so it's just our recommendation that you approve the program as it is written in an effort to maintain forward progress and assist the citizens of Hawthorne.
Quick question, uh, Mister Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, Kimberly, do you, uh, what plan do you guys have, for example, if you receive a lot of applicant? Are you going to do like a lottery, like, like the LA County is gonna do?
That is correct, we will have to do a lottery, we plan to assign a number to each application and randomly store those numbers to see who can be assisted. That would be the only fair option.
Alright, thank you, I move.
Uh, to the Chair, real quick, uh, real quick question. Um, uh, Miss Kimberly, uh, for how many residents uh, or households do you believe that we can help with this program?
You know, initially it was around two-hundred-and-ninety-six uh, families, now that the amount has increased that amount has increased as well substantially.
Can you approximate how many additional families will be? If you want to do a proportion, you could do a proportion.
At least we can say about three-hundred-and-fifty.
At, at, yeah, at least.
Yeah.
Okay.
To the Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you uh, keep us apprised of um, the progress as, as to how many people are being served as the pro- as the program um, moves ahead?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Actually, uh, can, can Kimberly just say that probably this project will not begin until October? Correct?
Correct, well, our estimated deadline was started towards the end of September to end with the, the, the the application deadline, the first week of October. Um, that was how fast we were trying to move things, but if you want us to start in October, we can start when you, when you like.
Well, as one, you guys put everything together, so I don't want to rush you to do it. So, cause I know you guys are doing a good job out there, so, but do it the way, you know, you think that is more effective.
Will do.
Alright, thank you.
What, what's the, so what does that make the total amount that's available under this program?
One-point-six.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, I think, I mean, to be, to be accurate, I think it's a little under one-point-six, it would be nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand plus six-hundred-thousand.
And uh, you mentioned that the opportunity cost would be the Veteran Housing Project?
No, so the Veterans Housing Project is, is not um, being funded by these sources, and so there was a, a separate um, RFP that the, the, the city had issued, that we were looking to do some other affordable housing, um, that will be put on hold.
Um, so if this program, if you're gonna start taking applications in October, when, when do you approximate the deadline to be?
We're looking for a two-week application span.
Yeah, because if you keep it going forever, you'll, you'll, you'll get like, you'll probably get applicants within the first two, three, four days.
That's what we suspect.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much.
Pleasure.
Um, is there a motion?
I do move, so I move.
Second. Please vote, roll call please.
Uh, Councilmember Wad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote refle- reflects mayor and City Council voting yes.
Mister City Manager?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, um, I have items twenty-four through twenty-seven on my consent calendar.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote, roll call please.
Councilmember Wad?
Yes.
Councilmember Wad, I'm sorry, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Um, yes.
The vote reflects mayor and City Council voting yes.
Elected officials reports, uh, Mister City Treasurer, David Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, I'll be brief, um, I want to commend the, the council for um looking after the, the renters and, and just the people of Hawthorne. I think that was a great decision to reallocate the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to help the renters' centers. The Renters Assistance Program, looking at, at some of the documentation that were provided, looks like previously it was uh, budgeted to help about three-hundred-and-twenty-nine households. And now bringing the budget up to one-point-five-eight-seven million, looks like it would be about five-hundred households that would be helped. And so I think that's, that, that's a terrific thing, um, just looking at some of the doc- documents regarding this, uh, it looks like uh, it was September twenty-first. It was the, the um, date that's being targeted to, to start the program, so um, you know, let's definitely make sure that everybody knows that it, it exists. Uh, and I just wanna, wanna encourage the council to continue to do uh, this great work you guys have done so far, which is find opportunities and resources to uh, to help the community, especially during this pandemic. And just speaking on that subject, I know there's some people that, that have been concerned about our small business owners. Um, and even the landlords who are, who are being hit during this time, and I just want to encourage encourage all of those groups of people to go to the SBA's website and uh, apply for the um the EIDL loan, which is a disaster loan that the SBA is, is providing for our small business owners um, and real estate owners, so whether you, you have your own, your own real estate in LLC or your name personally. If you're Uber driver, if you um, you know, are an attorney, a solopreneur. If you have less than five hundred employees, uh, the SBA has an EIDL loan. Um, that's available, obviously it's not free money, but it's probably the cheapest money that you can get. Um, the, the money that, that you can get from that loan is a thirty-year term. Uh, the payments don't start for a year and uh, the interest rate's at three-point-seven-five percent. And so if somebody, let's say, got a hundred thousand dollar loan, their payments will only be five hundred dollars per month. And so I would definitely wanna recommend, you know, all the small business owners in Hawthorne. I like to say, whether you be an Uber driver, or an attorney, or, or landlord, or real estate owner, um, if, you know, you need some capital for your business, to, to definitely apply for that, um, you know, I applied for it myself, uh, and, uh, some of my, my family and friends have, have as well, and so it's definitely a great resource. And, uh, and lastly, I wanna thank the, the community for paying attention to what we're doing here and making your voices heard. Um, I think that's, um, that's necessary, make sure that government runs, runs well, is that, you know, we are, uh, we get the input from the community, thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, uh, yes, first of all, I wanna thank, uh, everyone from wa, for watching from home, um, and I commend our neighbors for speaking up during public comments, uh, you kept, kept me busy tonight, and I appreciate that, so keep it going. Um, I have a few updates, uh, I wanna make sure that our neighbors are aware, you know, in addition to the funds that are, you know, that we spoke about today for, regarding renters, that, um, LA County does have the COVID-nineteen rent relief program, so they're still accepting applications until August thirty-first. Um, and we posted all that information via our so, social media sites. Um, the city clerk's office is holding two weekly city clerk office hours, on Mondays from four to five, and Wednesdays from one to two P M. So if you have any questions for us, please call us at three-one-zero-three-four-nine-two-nine-one-eight. Of course, you can call anytime, but these are two designated times, uh, as well. Um, over the next few months, as I shared during our previous meeting, um, the city clerk's office is spearheading the Hawthorne Census and Get Out the Vote campaign. Uh, please complete the census, our response rate is at sixty-two point two percent at this point, so we have improved by two percentage points over the last two weeks, so, so great job Hawthorne, let's keep it going. Um, I wanna thank all our volunteers for their efforts in making our city better, which include the youth commission. Um, if anyone out there wants to join us in our efforts towards improving our community, email me at pJimenez@cityofHawthorne.org. Um, and what you're volunteering, what, what, it will entail, we'll basically be sharing information about the census and voting via, um, your social media sites, and also we'll be speaking to various businesses, um, we've been doing it for the last few weeks, um, and the businesses have been really, uh, positive about it, uh, also the apartment, uh, owners have as well, so we've been posting that information all around the city. Um, again, thank you for watching tonight's council meeting, and stay safe out there.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Mike Tayeda?
Um, well, first, thank you for, uh, passing that and, uh, that resolution, so we could get a good program going to help the tenants before things get really out of hand. I think that, I hope that works out well for everybody. Um, the, the gentleman that spoke about the commercial funding, you know, that sounded an awful lot like what uh, went down in two thousand and eight, where all the bundling and all the foreclosures, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, the, um, um, there is gonna be a problem with commercial real estate after this whole thing's over. And, uh, the issue, we don't really know just how bad it's gonna be, because even if it's not an issue with COVID, is that, um, employers are realizing that people can work out of their homes. And that, so there's gonna be a certain level of people that are never gonna go back to work, or they're not gonna need that much, uh, commercial space, which is very expensive. So there is gonna be, uh, some kind of a reckoning coming after COVID, and after everybody, uh, you know, is able to work, whether they're going to be able to justify spending that high rent in commercial buildings, so there is something that's going to happen, who knows what, you know? But, once the foreclosure begins, you never know how it's gonna end, so I hope that this bill passes and money's made available, so, um, the, the, this bleak scenario that he pointed out about all the dominoes that are gonna go, if this goes, is real, we just don't know how bad it's gonna be. So, I think, uh, that, I hope that they do, uh, uh, put together something that can help these hotels and commercial uh, lenders, uh, cause that kinda money is hard to find, that's not easy, that's not like Fanny and Freddie. You know, that's a little different ballgame, so, um, I'm glad to hear that they, they're, they're looking forward to try to avoid, uh, you know, a disaster. Cause, uh, there is something coming afterwards, just on the fact that the workforce is working just fine out of their homes, so people do not have to now lease these big, you know, there's a certain shrinkage that's gonna happen uh, in that area. Um, and I hope that we can get, uh, find out as quickly as possible how many tenants we have in our city that are in trouble, and see how we can rush and help them, you know? In, in a real, you know, in a real sense. Uh, because you help the tenant, you're helping the landlord, and I don't, you know, it's tho, it's those little landlords that own duplex that I'm concerned about, I'm not concerned about the building that's sixty units where they could lose, uh, three or four tenants, or five tenants, and then they, they don't even feel it. Uh, I'm concerned about the smaller units, that those, uh, that, uh, they're very, very fragile if, uh, if tenants stop paying rent, so the sooner that we can get that off the ground and reach out and find out, uh, that'd be great, so I appreciate what the council did this evening, and, uh, and that's it, that's it for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, council, councilwoman, uh, Olivia Valentine?
Thank you. Um, so first, I want to acknowledge that we've recently celebrated the one-hundredth anniversary of women being able to vote in this country. Um, the women's suffrage movement was a decade-long fight to win the right to vote for women in the United States. It took activists and reformers nearly a hundred years to win that right, and the campaign was not easy. Disagreements over strategy threatened to cripple the movement more than once. But on August eighteenth, nineteen-twenty, the Nineteenth Amendment to the Constitution was finally ratified, enfranchising all American women and declaring for the first time that they, like men, deserve all the rights and responsibilities of citizenship. So we need to remember the names of Susan B. Anthony, Elizabeth Katie Stanton, Carrie Chapman Cat. They were all suffragettes to whom women everywhere owe a debt of gratitude. Um, I wanna say a little bit about our police practices dialogue. On August twenty-ninth, the South Bay Council of Governments held its he, second police practice dialogue on Zoom. All you want to know about police practices, that was what we entitled it. Mayor Jim Butts, who has thirty-nine years in law enforcement, was the host. Jim provided really practical ideas for building communication and trust between communities and their police departments. He answered many questions that had been submitted in advance, and some that were submitted at the meeting. Some of the broader topics included the proper use of discretion by police officers, the need for the council to have knowledge of excessive force complaints, the need to give the police chief the responsibility and support to weed out bad officers, and the need for the council to work with the city manager and the police chief to be educated on police philosophy and operations, so that everyone can be on the same page. That broadcast was taped, and I urge my colleagues to watch it on the South Bay Cogs website under special board of directors meeting dated eight, twenty-twenty. The website is www.southbaycities.org. I think you'll find it very gratifying if you watch it, and very educational, and, um, at some point, um, I will be discussing with, uh, our city manager, um, what, you know, what follow-up activities we should have as a result of that. Um, one more thing, and that's about the, um, the senior, uh, food program. Um, as you know, our food program has ended, um, and there is one left, the, uh, there for seniors that have snacks delivered and are unable to get out, grab a snack will end this week on Thursday, August twenty-seventh. And you need to sign up with the lunch program to continue getting food weekly. For, um, there is, Torrance has picked up our lunch program. So if you have already been in contact with Torrance and have been added to their program, great. Do not forget that you must RSVP each week in advance for the following week. Please know that if you cannot pick up yourself, a neighbor, friend, or family member can pick it up for you. And for senior, for Hawthorne senior residents that would like to start receiving lunch from Torrance weekly, please call them at three-one-o-six-zero-two-four-nine-zero-five, and remember to RSVP each week for the following week, once you start receiving your lunches. If you have a doctor's certification that you are disabled and cannot get out, please explain that to Torrance when you call the number. Now, um, if you are, if there are any more specific questions regarding information concerning the food program, please call our recre, recreation and community services at three-one-o-three-four-nine-one-six-five-zero. Once our senior centers open again, you can have lunch and visit whichever senior center you choose, uh, just as before the pandemic, and we're looking forward to that time. And that's all I have, have a great week, everyone.
Thank you, councilmember Awad?
Uh, thank you, I wanted to thank the residents for coming out, uh, voicing their concerns, um. Mr. City Manager, if we can follow up on a lot of the requests and concerns that were brought up during the beginning, especially during public, um, communication, uh, that'd be great, um, we don't want them to have the idea that we're not listening to any of their suggestions, or whatever they're facing within the city of Hawthorne. So if we can kinda get that up and rolling by the next council meeting, that'd be wonderful, um, and besides that, thank you all for participating and showing a community involvement, especially in civic involvement, that's all.
Thank you, councilmember Awad, uh, Mayor Protem Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, again, thank you for everybody, for participating, for coming, good meeting. Um, I wanna thank, you know, uh, Jen Vogel for coming out and giving us the update, so it's very, uh, good to know that, uh, that East South Bay Workforce Investor Board, oh, they're helping the layoff employees during this pandemic. So that is very good news, uh, that, uh, he was able to help, uh, more than, uh, one thousand uh, and ninety, uh, individuals. Um, also, I wanna thank Ms. Valentine for bringing, uh, the guy Eric, to, to give us a heads up what's going on on the hero, um, hope, the Hope Act, uh, that I hope maybe, uh, you know, the Congress could be able to add that to the, uh, heroes, the Heroes Act, so, because it's still in negotiation with the White House and the, uh, and the Senate. So I think, uh, it's a good idea to have, uh, those programs included on that, uh, uh, the the Hero Act that has been discussing in Washington, D.C., so I'll do my best to talk to Congress, Madison Waters, about that, okay? Uh, the other, uh, one gentleman, uh, Mr. Delgado, uh, was talking about the sign. Uh, he mentioned, uh, my name and Ms. Valentine's name, but I have not received no email from, from him, from Delgado, so I just be, uh, FYI, so, cause I do reply to all my emails from my constituents, so I have not received no email from him. Um, the other thing that I would, I would love to ask Eric, I don't know if we did it already, uh, but the, the gentleman, Matt Sakari, that has been calling about, uh, Don and Mike, uh, can, uh, I don't know if, Mr. Mayor, uh, you can work with, uh, Eric Lee, maybe to reply to him in writing? Uh, because there is a lot of information that we receive about that, that those two gentlemen, or the, you know, the uh, Matt, and also we know about what, what's going on with Don and Mike, and I don't want us to be put it, you know, uh, disclose information in public, but I would love to see maybe a letter send it to him, directed from, from the, from all of us. Uh, because we do have information that I think he needs to be aware of, I don't know if he, he is aware of, of.
That's a, that, that's a fair point, that's a fair point.
Exactly, because we have a lot of information about service that has been, uh, offered to these, uh, two individual, and we
Tonight, possibly.
In writing, okay? Uh, the other, the other thing that, uh, I know probably you guys would do, and I wanna say thank you to Eric and us, again, to Kimberly Mack, for the, uh, um, rental assistance program that we're gonna have, and just to keep us posted, maybe, you know, put it on our website, and maybe when you guys are ready to get the application going, just let us know, so because, you know, a lot of people is going to contact us uh, via email and, and text message, so we'll be able to tell them exactly the date and what's going on, uh, in the near future. Um, yeah, so the, uh, basically, you know, uh, we are trying, we're trying to do all good things for our community, and we know, um, rental assist is one of, um, you know, commercials, all the business, so we, we continue to keep looking, and we're hoping that the federal government would get that together, so will send us more additional federal dollars that maybe we can help some of these businesses that, uh, to prevent them to go out of, out of business, right, because we, we have a lot of small businesses that is suffering out there, and we need to make sure that they come back after this pandemic, so we have, have to keep our fingers crossed. Uh, again, I wanna encourage everybody to, like, uh, Dr. Jimenez said, you know, fill up your census, because, you know, sixty-two percent is still low, uh, because the last time in twenty-ten, we only had sixty-four percent, okay, so that's meaning we lost millions of dollar, uh, when we don't have a hundred percent. So it is millions of dollars that, for ten years, that we have to receive from the federal government, and that's the way they send us money on the, for CDBG, for home fund, for schools, for special ads, for roads, uh, even sometime for police, so they go by the number, by the census number. So we have to make sure that we pass seventy, seventy percent, so I'm keeping my fingers crossed. And I do have something for you, uh, Mr. Jimenez, that we talk on, uh, on a text message, okay? Again, uh, good night, everybody, and be safe out there, and keep using your mask and social distance, uh, because I think we're getting, uh, good news from California and from LA County, the numbers are going down, so we're gonna keep our fingers crossed, that if we go below five percent, maybe thing can start to reopen again, so God bless and good night.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor Protem, and thank you to all my colleagues, um, today for participating. Uh, thank you to all the residents for providing their feedback, and that's right, let's try to follow up on some of those, uh, uh, comments, and, uh, just take a look at that, see what can be done. So, uh, there's not much from me, I just hope everybody just has a good night. And, uh, there's, it's like a lot of humid, it's, it's not only it's, is it hot? It's like weirdly humid, so that kinda makes it even stickier and more uncomfortable. So, uh, my advice to you is stay hydrated, make sure you guys drink your water, stay cool, um, and, uh, just be careful out there, don't expose yourself to the sun, try to find shade if you're walking around your neighborhood, safely, uh, you know, protected with your face mask, of course. Um, and as Mayor Protem Montero said, uh, there's prospective good news, there's about four counties, I believe, that were taken off of the list, San Diego, Orange County, and two or three northern California counties that were taken off the list. So, I mean, we're, we're of densely, we're a highly populated county, um, more dense than those other ones that I just mentioned. So, uh, our numbers, hopefully, we'll be able to approach that soon, and, um, let's, everybody just do your part. Okay, so I hope everybody has a good night, and, uh, have a good night. Turn the meeting.
Night, everybody.
Night.
We have closed session. We have one close session.
Oh, wait a minute, it wasn't listed here, was it?
Yeah, it's on the back.
Oh, okay. Did I read, okay, so, Mr. Si, City Attorney, I'm going to re-adjourn the meeting. Chief Ishi, can, uh, can the administrator of the meeting let us know that we're still online? Is cable, has cables shut off, can you please advise?
Yes, give us about thirty seconds.
Okay.
You have a two, uh, two-minute break, Mayor?
Yeah, you guys can, uh, I need to, yeah.
Mayor, I think we need to solicit, uh, any interest in, in public comment before we go to a closed session.
Absolutely, but let's, uh, we're giving it thirty seconds to come back online, because, uh, anytime that they hear the gavel, they actually turn off the, they automatically turn it off without question, so.
Got it.
Chief Ishi, just let me know, just so we could just, uh, do that.
We're live now.
Okay.
For you to close.
The meeting is re adjourned. Are there any comments on our closed session from the public, Mr. City Clerk?
No, there are not.
If not, I'll declare the oral communications closed. I will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. We're in recess.
Yes, we're dark now. We'll put you in the closed session now.
All right, two minutes, absolutely. We need two minutes.
Hey, Russ, I'm gonna call you right now.
The city council meeting is called to order. We have met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the city manager and the city attorney have been advised.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's nothing further from our council member colleagues or staff, I declare the meeting adjourned. Good night.